I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, that sounds so much better than when we were on WebEx. The town of Burlington will be holding the May 5th, 2022 meeting. The planning board is a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order in March 12th, 2020 authorizing remote meetings under General Law Code 30A, Section 20.
Those seeking to participate remotely may do so via the following. You can join our WebEx meeting on townofberlinet.com. This meeting number is 2345-112-9187. And you can join by phone at 617-315-0704. We're being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel, which can be found on Comcast 99, RSCAM 15, and Verizon 41, and also streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public comments. Questions can be asked via WebEx chat function. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves first.
Great. Onto citizens' time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not on our current agenda? If so, would you please raise your hand and speak and identify yourself?
Hi, Kathy O'Neill, 31 hours out.
Sure, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk to everybody and revisit the situation that we had down with NBM at 24 Terry Ave. I think it was about three meetings, three years ago, that our meeting started with regards to the addition that they wanted to put there. I attended most of them. I noticed that the addition was done within a very short period of time, several months. The conditions that they agreed to, to this board, nothing has been done with regard to them. My understanding is that they have been working on it, but I do have to question why their addition was done almost immediately, and three years later, they still don't have the sidewalk in, the lights, or the trees. When I saw the renderings and participated at those meetings, there was no sign that I was made aware of. And I've talked to a couple of members from this board who also are aware that they don't remember anything about any parking spaces being added directly on Terry Ave. So I noticed over the last month, they've put some stakes in with orange flags on them. I was wondering what was going on. So I called the town, and I think I spoke to Liz, and she told me that, yeah, they're, you know, they're in the works of getting this done, and they're going to be meeting with conservation, and they're adding three spaces for parking. Very first time I heard about it, and I attended many of the meetings, and I'm sure, Brenda, I know you weren't here at the time, but I never saw anything about three parking spaces there. I sent you all a bunch of pictures recently. The pictures are for something that's going to be brought up later on that I'd like to have the chance to speak to you about again. But some of the pictures show Terry Ave, where the wetlands are that they're going to be almost on top of. And there's no need for three more spaces. I go by their parking lot at least twice a day, probably four to six times a day. I've never seen it overflow, ever. I took some pictures that included the parking lot for you, right in the very front, two spaces available. To the back, I don't know how many spaces were available, but there was more than enough. So I don't understand where this, all of a sudden, this three parking space issue has come from. I'm certainly not aware of it. I'm wondering if any of you remember it. I have, I looked through my papers. I saw no renderings with that. I do remember them coming before the board for the second time, and we, the board was nice enough to ask them to add additional landscaping, not just the little bit that they were going to put in. I want to say, NBM is an excellent neighbor. They're probably the best of the people down there. But I'm not happy with the three spaces. I don't think that anybody on this board should be. We're dealing with eight-foot fences that have bobbed wire on top of it. If someone can explain to me why that's needed, how that was ever allowed for a storage facility. I took additional pictures to show you trash down there. I've spoken to people and told them about the rat problem that has been up in that neighborhood now. I'm here to ask you tonight to please, we are a small neighborhood, but this is a big problem because these industrial buildings are having a direct impact on the people who live in that neighborhood. And from the pictures that I showed you, I think that most of you would be in agreement. They don't care about being good neighbors to us. They should not be allowed any special permits at all, zero exceptions, because they do not follow through on their word. These developers care about themselves, about getting those buildings occupied, about making their money. We live there. Some of you drive through there on a regular basis. Please support and defend and stick up for this small neighborhood, and do not allow these developers to come in and put in hazardous waste now, which we'll be talking about later. But to say that they need three additional spaces when they don't, number one, and number two, they're only feet from the wetlands. How could this possibly be a good idea? How could anyone possibly agree to this? I hope you'll all take this into consideration. You should know that the neighborhood, of course, I live right there. I've received phone calls, knocks on my doors, and emails. And I have said to people, let's go and hear what's being talked about tonight, see what's being presented. We don't want to cause alarm and, you know, go crazy over something that maybe we don't have to go crazy over. But I really hope that you'll pay special attention tonight to this issue about the toxic hazardous materials that they want to bring in. It should be a resounding no. There should be zero discussion about it. And also, if you could look into, please, this new situation with three parking spaces, and why they put up their big addition and completed it, but they couldn't put in the sidewalk, the lights, and the landscaping that they promised they would do. I understand that there's an end date coming up on us very quickly, and I'm very concerned about meeting that end date so that they can't just walk away. And so I hope you can all understand where I'm coming from. It is a neighborhood up there. We're being directly impacted by trucks, as I said, bobbed wires, eight-foot fences. It's ridiculous. The trash, the dumpsters, some of the pictures illustrate that. Take a ride by. You can see it any day of the week. So thank you very much for your time and consideration, and I think I'll be talking to you again later.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steph, can we put together a letter and send it to the property owner, and then also send in copy to conservation?
So I just want to give you an update. So the three parking spaces, if you recall, they had a parking, they had a parking requirement. They, we asked them to put more green space and take away parking. They are underparked, that's why I pointed. So per zoning, and we asked for more green space. They had this parking lot that was in reserve for the three spaces. There's like a little driveway, three spaces. However, they were like, we're not going to do that. We're not going to go to conservation yet because we're not going to do it. They do have to go to conservation to approve those three spaces.
So were they, just, they were held in reserve?
They were in reserve in our proposal.
Didn't they have to come back to us?
So there isn't any drainage, there isn't any stormwater control for those spaces right now in order for them to approve that. They need to go to conservation. Conservation's going to look at stormwater controls, which is something that would need to come back to us.
Whereas they haven't adhered to the other terms of decision.
So the other aspects of the lighting, the landscaping, the sidewalk, they're underway doing. We sent them a letter back in February. They have been mobilizing. That January deadline, they are delaying because of this parking lot. We have done everything. We're in the agreement of that, you know, the town needs to do any approvals it needs to do to have this happen. So therefore, that June deadline of having that, they need, no, they need to finish that. It's not...
By June?
Well, they're supposed to finish it by June, but if they finish in the middle of July, they're not off the hook. They need to finish it. They're supposed to finish it by June. We're hoping they will finish it by June, and that's what we know right now. Getting ready for this meeting and all the interviews, we, I haven't reached out to them specifically, but they are scheduled to be on the next Conservation Commission meeting. And we'll send out the previous plan and the notice for that meeting to all of you.
Can we also let, make sure Conservation knows that they have not upheld their part of the agreement, and that they should not be granted those three spaces until they do everything else they were supposed to do?
We can, if the rest of the members agree to send a note to that effect, we can do that.
I would appreciate that.
Can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So, so what's the consequence if they don't finish by the deadline?
I mean, they've already... I mean, their CO gets, I mean, they're...
So they can be, they can have their occupancy taken away?
Yeah, I mean, they're not...
So it's not like, it's not like they're off the hook. Their occupancy, so the consequence is that we can shut them down?
Yeah, they need to finish.
Right.
At this point, because we have, back in, a couple of months ago, when, you know, we, everything we needed to do, like, it's on you. We have...
So can we send, can that letter include that, that your, the consequence to not finishing by the deadline is that your certificate of occupancy can be revoked?
To the new space.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they are moving, they are moving forward. We will...
Does anyone on the board have any objections to sending a letter to Conservation?
I have a question before I answer that. When did the town complete its obligation? February? Or much earlier?
End of last year.
Okay, the end of December?
And then we hadn't seen mobilization, so we reminded everyone of this June deadline.
So we, so the town did their obligation the end of the, end of last year?
Yeah, the spaces in reserve are also on the site plan that was signed. So these, so back when we permitted the addition, it was on that site plan, so those spaces have been enumerated. We don't like over-parking and over-paving, so you guys said, let's leave them in reserve.
So why do they want them now? If they don't need them, why do we have to allow them?
From what I understand, they have more salespeople that are coming in, and so they...
But if the parking lot's empty?
I mean, that's, we need to hear from them.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's what they're going to have to talk to the CONCON about.
That's my question. Another part of the question was just to that. So if they're in reserve, don't they have to come to us to say, we're going to now build them and use them? I thought so.
I thought so too.
So, so they can't just start building them without coming to us?
Because if every time we put parking spaces in reserve, which we do...
It's a reason. We do it.
A lot. If they've just got them, then why would we even put them in reserve?
Exactly right. So it's in reserve until they can prove to us that they need them.
Right.
So they would have to come here to start building them. So how are they starting to construct spots that they don't have approval?
All that we're aware of is that they started work on the lights and the sidewalk. They have filed a conservation for the parking lot. We're still investigating where we are with the decision, how this is happening, and how we're moving forward.
Do they have to come to us, though, for the three in reserve if they want to actually use them?
I have to look at how it's written.
I have to look at that condition of the decision.
Will they need to come to you?
I mean, if they're in reserve, that's what they're in reserve for.
All right. So I think action items, let's take a look at the decision. If we can get them in here, that's our preference. Does anyone have any reservations about sending a letter to Conservation?
No.
Okay.
No, not about that, but I do want to speak on this.
Okay. And Paul, what would you like to say?
I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a site visit down there to add some urgency to this because this has been going on for a while, and it's the area that where I kind of think of many places where the neighborhood is more directly affected by what goes on down there with that parking lot and so forth. And I just feel like there's foot dragging going on, and they're just saying, well, if and when we ever will get around to it, but we've got all the permits we need now.
Well, they can lose their occupancy if they don't, they can lose their occupancy if they don't complete all of the requirements per the decision. So...
They can, but how often has that happened?
Yeah.
Doesn't happen. It's like a non-threat trip that we hang over people sometimes.
Don't say that out loud. We're on record. I said, don't say that out loud. We're on record. I think, I like your idea. I think we should have, as you suggested, Brenda, have staff check into how that decision is worded. If indeed they have to come back to us, as I suspect they must, we could have a site plan to go down there, look at the spaces and say, where are the trees? Where's the sidewalk? Where's the lights? You know?
Yeah. You might also want to keep in mind, and I'm not speaking for the property owner at all, that the town only completed its obligation at the end of December.
We actually, there was nothing we had to do.
Well, that's what I asked. That's what I asked.
Things needed. They, because we didn't need to go, it wasn't in the wetland, the sidewalks.
Okay, so I stand corrected.
So could they have proceeded previously?
Yes.
Okay. Then we need to...
Fine.
Okay. So take a look at the decision, draft a letter for CONCON, and then we'll take the next steps from there. Okay? Moving on, is there anyone else that would like to speak at citizens' time? Liz, I did see something in the chat. I think Sheri had posted something while we were talking, and I'm not quite sure if that was something related to Ms. O'Neill's topic or something else, or maybe I'm seeing things. Right now? I didn't see her hand up. I just saw something, some chat. Oh, oh.
Why don't I have chat right now? Maybe Jen got rid of chat? I think people just want to, I heard somebody say, like, state her name for the record, but I think that it's, I don't think it's, I think that Ms. O'Neill did.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, let's move on. Two matters of appointment. Item A is a board vote. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.2. Convenience food stores, drugstores, retail stores for sale of beauty and health aids, smoking supplies, periodicals. None with a sale of food intended for consumption on the premises of the zoning bylaws. 226 Cambridge Street, Burlington Smoke Shop Inc. is the applicant. So just as a reminder, we did close the public hearing during the last meeting. This topic is being brought up so all members of the board could vote at this time. And for the record, if you could, if the applicant and counsel could state your name for the record.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thomas Murphy for the applicant. With me is Stan Patel, who's the principal behind the proposed store. As the chair mentioned, we did, we've been through several meetings thus far. The last time the public hearing was closed, the vote was postponed until today. At the board's, in the staff's suggestion, I had sent a cover letter to the director just confirming what my client had agreed to from a condition standpoint, which I think covered most of the things that have been discussed over the course of time. However, obviously, the public hearing is closed, so we're not looking to discuss that issue, but we're obviously here to answer any questions the board may have.
Great. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns, or are we...
So I just want to, you have a special permit in front of you. There's conditions that are highlighted that have come up as part of this process. The public hearing being closed, you fully can discuss the conditions of approval and the decision. That's what, that's what you do as the hearing closes and you're coming to your decision. So all of those things we can do. We can certainly list them for you if you want us to, for the record, or we could just bring them up. But we can't take, at this point, because it's closed, we can't take new testimony.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep. Question. Did you talk to the property owner about the fluorescent lighting above that to change that and to have the gooseneck be lit? I know you said you were going to talk to the property owner on that.
We did not.
We...
Okay.
Did we call up Murray Hills and ask, did you...
That was the action you, staff had, I thought, mentioned it two meetings ago.
Yeah.
The gooseneck lighting is here.
The gooseneck lighting we have as required with no internal illumination. Whether or not they can turn off that fluorescent is something we should probably outline here. And that we can outline that to say, to be reviewed and approved by the planning director in consultation with the chair and/or designee of the chair, if that's something. But I would say that you won't want to be illuminated by gooseneck versus the fluorescent.
Right.
And we can work that balance out in the condition. So I would add that to gooseneck.
All through that town, right? So this is the first baby step in that.
Fluorescent above.
Right.
And yes, I would like that to come through.
Yep.
Yeah, they can't be turned off. They could probably be covered.
Something, yeah.
Yeah. Well, they all have the individual bulb too.
Yeah, I mean, maybe a little... Take the bulb, yeah.
So...
I don't know how the bulbs are set up, but...
Just my, my last comment is on item M. It talks about a lot of no-smoking signs in front of the store, along the fencing, in front of the ice cream shop, at the opening of the fence, at the bottom of the stairs. Yeah, I think, I think that might be overkill, and then you're basically highlighting the fact that you've got the smoke shop there. So I think just, you know, maybe in front of the store would be it instead of trying to proliferate that through the plaza.
May I respond? I actually asked for that, Bill.
Yeah.
And the reason I asked for the non-smoke, no-smoking signs to be also in front of this ice cream store is because I think that gives patrons of any of the establishments there the courage to, or gives them some ability to say, hey, there's a sign, no smoking. It's hard to do that when there's nothing indicating that that is the law, the rule. But if there's a sign that says it, I think it's easier for people to speak up, and that's why I asked for it. I don't, I'm not saying how many signs there should be. I think if there's one in front of the store, and there should be at least one in front of this, the ice cream shop, maybe two. I wasn't enumerating how many there should be, but I would like to see at least one in front of the ice cream shop for that reason so that people can't, even if they buy things somewhere else, we don't want people sitting in front of the ice cream shop smoking, right?
Well, we don't want them sitting in front of the barber shop either.
Right. They're, it's all connected. Yeah.
Or in front of the sub-shop. So...
Right.
Where there are benches, right, all around there.
Yeah.
And they were envisioned to be about the size of your nameplates. I mean, not like...
Oh, I understand. I get it. So that changes what I would say is, that would not change my mind about where I was with that because now you're actually, you're kind of focusing on it where the idea was to kind of focus away from it. So just to that comment, and maybe just to say that, if we have to do that, and put all these signs all over the place, even these little signs that say, no smoking, no smoking here, all the way along that plaza, which I think is going, is not, really what we want to do is that when the applicant said there was, you know, this is the place where they had to go. When I walk downtown, I see a number of vacant spots that might be a better position, maybe even just one section away, you know, versus it being in this particular spot. So that, if that would be the case, I would have to, have to think about that.
Do you think it compromises maybe having small signage, you know, like the sign of the nameplate where there is outdoor seating? So just where the outdoor seating is in front of the ice cream shop or in the pocket park, you know, you're not supposed to smoke, I think, what is it, 15 feet or some on...
You're not supposed to smoke in any of these locations.
Right.
And I don't think the issue is that, I mean, I...
I didn't want to make things worse. I was trying to make things better. So if I'm making things worse with my suggestion, I am willing to withdraw it. I, that was my reason...
I understand.
When I brought it up, but I'm not digging my heels in on that.
What's, what's your thoughts, Ernie, Paul?
I'm not participating because I missed two minutes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Ernie missed two minutes. Sorry.
Sorry.
Paul?
I think if putting a lot of little signs is what we're going to look for ourselves, but put one big sign. Big sign says no smoking. So if people come into that area, they're not old like me and have this weight, you know, it says no smoking clearly and large enough, largely enough, so people understand that. And that makes it easy to enforce because even if they're very old like me, you know, so they come up close, see that big sign? It says no smoking, yeah.
I'm fine with a couple of little signs or one big sign. I don't really care.
So where would they be located? I'm just wondering how we can go outside the perimeter of the spot here.
Well, I can tell you what I suggested, but I am not, as I said, digging my heels in. I suggested that there be one sign outside this particular establishment, and then again, in front of the ice cream store. I was thinking along the fence because that's where everybody sits, in front of the fence. But I am open to other suggestions.
I'm comfortable with in front of the store. I think that that should be, I think...
So on the inside of the fence, so you really can't see it from the outside of the fence, if you put it on the inside post?
Where the people sit.
Yeah.
Yeah, then, so then it's not visible from looking in. Just put a couple of small ones right along the inside of the fence.
Oh, that's what I intended, on the inside of the fence.
It doesn't say that here.
Yeah, so if we say in the interior of the fence.
So that when people are sitting down, they see the sign.
Okay, done.
Yeah, and something that's not, you know, style-wise, is in conformity with the...
Something quiet.
Yeah, like if, yeah, if we're going to go with the black theme with the, you know, then something that's...
It's a Rod Iain type of sign.
Can you just make sure that staff reviews the sign?
Yeah, so subject to a review by staff. That's...
Yeah, I have it, but I have that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's to be reviewed by the project director.
Is there anything else that anyone would like to...
I just wanted to make a comment because I personally struggled with this a lot and was very much on the fence. And I wanted to just highlight some of the changes that were made that helped me support this. And I thought it was important that the applicant agreed that no more than 15% of his displays would be of glassware, that they would not be visible from the street or from right in front of the store. They would be further back in the store. And the fact that the doors are locked and no one under the age of 21 is allowed to enter was also important to me. So I appreciated those concessions.
Thank you.
In addition, that there is no hukus, which was definitely a little bit of a sticking point for me.
First time I ever wrote in a decision.
Madam Chair, just, where I'm the one that actually voted against it last time, I just want to clarify and basically reiterate what's already been said. I felt that at the time of the vote last time, it wasn't sufficiently tightened up, and I think we've now put sufficient regulation in here to, you know, that I'm much more comfortable than I was last time, and consequently, will change my vote.
We do need to talk about the awnings, four single or two larger. We haven't decided that here.
My thought would be two larger. It would, I think it would look more normal than four small awnings.
I think so too. Yeah. Okay, so...
And I like the addition of the window boxes. I'm not sure whose idea that was, but it sounds nice.
Yep.
That was you? Good job, Joe.
Real flowers.
Not just boxes. We could have something in the box.
We're talking about like pretty flowers, not flowers that would be used inside of your shop.
There's no, yeah, whatever.
No Venus Five drafts.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Flowers.
Exactly. Two archery awnings.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments, questions, concerns regarding the special permit draft?
We had recommended in our correspondence to you that we had some concerns about the window tinting. I mean, just in general, like window tinting, I think. I would rather see something that's transparent and see people inside and outside and be active than, and try to put things that are inside in different areas of the store and go to, go away from the window tinting. So we still have it kind of up in the air, so...
I'm comfortable as long as he's not having any of the glassware and that things are properly positioned within the facility, not to tint, but I'll leave that also to my fellow board members to comment.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The tinting can be a little off-putting.
Yeah.
Look a little seedy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The other thing was the side, just the, we have the, I know we don't have sign review here, but we certainly have the ability to make the sign kind of conform with everything. So is that something that, where we don't have the sign in front of us as far as colors and...
We did see it right there.
We did see it.
So we have some regulation addressing the sign in here.
So the condition that I added in terms of N was the elements along, along the, sorry, that should be front, not from. Including the lighting, signage, and awning shall be consistent with the colonial frontage of the building. Front elements to be reviewed and approved by the planning director in consultation with the chair or chairman appointee. Front elements to be reviewed and approved by the planning director in consultation with the chair or chairman appointee. So, as we can't directly get at that, the sign, the, you know, the, the content necessarily of the signage, that design of the signage to be colonial in harmony with the rest of that, that front is what we're looking for. No internal illumination and just, I mean, I think the applicant is looking at a, a quality signed product or at least that's what's been expressed, so.
We're certainly okay with running it past Binsky Premium Cigars.
That'd be great, that'd be great, we'd appreciate it if you guys could do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.9 convenience food stores, drug stores, retail stores for sale of beauty and health aids and smoking supplies, periodicals, none with the sale of food intended for consumption on the premises of the zoning bylaws to permit the operation of a retail smoke shop by the name of Binsky Premium Cigars for property located in the Central Business District located at 214 Cambridge Street, subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit A attached.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Thank you.
All just a favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you with the board, it's been interesting, several meetings, but I appreciate your patience.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Good luck.
Okay, item B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 6.1.3 non-conforming, non-conforming single and two-family residential structures of the zoning bylaws, 16 Hilltop Drive, Mohan Babu Ramasetti is the applicant. Good evening, if you please, please come up to the table. If you would kindly identify yourself for the record.
So my name is Mohan Babu Ramasetti. I live at 16 Hilltop Drive, Burlington. Hi, my name is Ronaldo, I'm owner of Home Solutions LLC Group, so I'm gonna be with GC on the job. Very nice to meet you guys.
You as well, thank you. Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
So, a little background about me, so I've been living in Burlington for about twelve years, living and working here. We moved into the, the house, 16 Hilltop Drive, about six years ago. We were just two of us, my wife and I, at that time, and then we added two more.
Two more of you or two more?
Two more.
Two more wives?
Family members.
Two more family members, okay.
Family members, um, so the youngest one is about eleven months old. So we're trying to add some space, living space. The plan that we have is to add a full second floor and attach two-car garage and there is a farmer's porch in the front. So the farmer's porch is seven feet wide roughly. So the house, based on the plot plan that was done by surveyor, the existing house is already non-conforming with the front setback, so the existing setback is twenty feet. So if we add the farmer's porch, that will, that will cut it, lower, lower it even more to thirteen feet. So, the, the reason for the farmer's porch is primarily the looks plus the sun angle. From that, that side, we get a lot more sun, so we can enjoy the sun. Plus, obviously, integral part of the home design, so it, it's, it makes the house look nicer and the neighborhood nicer.
Steph, do you have any comments that you'd like to add?
Sure, so just a little bit of background, you guys usually do not see single-family homes. So this is kind of newer territory, it's kind of one of those buried things in the bylaw, so that you guys are giving a special permit under 613, non-conforming single and two-family residential structures. The planning board may by special permit allow such reconstruction, extension or alteration where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure. So he, the house is non-conforming to zoning as originally. It doesn't meet the front setback and the side setback, as you can see on the red line plan that I gave you guys and is on the board. And so the proposed addition is, it's not adding to the farmer's porch, the green area and the front is not, is, you know, it's within the fourth, it's within a fifteen-foot side setback. It's adding to the front setback, adding to that non-conformity. And then the garage is also within, adding a little bit into that front setback. So it's basically that you guys find that this is not going to be substantially more detrimental than the existing home to the neighborhood, character or environment, all of those things. So, what I gave to you is you guys have kind of architecturals of what they're looking to do as well as the, kind of the plot plan, so that's all, if you have any questions, let me know.
I do have a question.
Sure.
From, from, I spent a lot of years on the Board of Appeals, this is something that we would typically see in a Board of Appeals.
Mm-hmm.
From a frontage variance.
I know, so.
From a frontage variance from a, from a setback variance. Why, why didn't this go to the Board of Appeals versus coming to us?
So I think that previously, it was not, that was not the determination of the building inspector at the time. It was the building inspector's determination, he read through it and it just was never, it was never done that way. And the building inspector has, has read our bylaws, has interpreted it that way. And it, it does say, the planning board may by special permit allow such reconstruction, so it says it explicitly, but the previous building inspectors never, kind of.
Right, but also it needs to begin with it's a non-conforming.
Yeah, it's already a non-conforming house, that's the key, it's already non-conforming.
And then it was going non-conforming, it goes to the BI.
Well, I can recall, I've been fifteen years and we've had a lot of non-conformings to make it non-con, more non-conforming with the variance, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and John Clancy and Mark Dupell have a different interpretation of that.
Yeah.
What is your, what is your interpretation of both, so what do you think?
My interpretation is that you actually could do either one. If it's non-conforming, if it's legally non-conforming already, under the single and two-family, you can come to the planning board. When we redid section six in two thousand ten, well, ten, it was like right before Jack got on, that there was, it was more explicit that if you have a legal non-conformity and you want to increase, modify, change, you go to the planning board. It was just practice, I think, that's where, you went to the Board of Appeals that whole time and I think the previous building inspector just had that interpretation. I think you still, if you wanted, you could legalize, so a non-conformity is, something was legal when you built it but then became, became illegal later. You can formalize that non-conformity by getting a variance and then you have a variance, so now it's legal.
Now it's legal and it's recorded.
And it's recorded. For the non-conformity, you can also extend, nullify or change that, or alter that non-conformity through a special permit with the planning board. So, it's, you could do, you could do either, I, I mean, when the zoning bylaw is the legal route to what we want people, what is prescribed, this is what you do if. The variance aspect is, I'm gonna go outside of the zoning bylaw and do something different. So, I mean, you could interpret it either way, you know, you have a unique perspective being on the Board of Appeals for so long, so I, I would.
Well, we did this on Pontos and actually it was the court that kicked it back to us.
Well, we had it on Board of Appeals too for Pontos and it proved it, so that's why it may have come this way after.
It came from the court back to the Board, back to the planning board.
Pontos was a little bit different.
Yeah, they had.
And had some challenges that, that was not related to something like this.
I think my concern is, is that you have specific kind of requirements for the Board of Appeals, which is hardship of the land, right? And then here we have different requirements with regard to a special permit, you know, to be in characteristic of the neighborhood. So, I would say if, if I'm an applicant, I would go this route every single time because you don't have that, that threshold to get over from the Board of Appeals, so why wouldn't you?
But you still have to meet all the findings of the special permit.
Yeah, but that's easy compared to, to, to Board of Appeals requirements, in my opinion. Right, you have to, you, I mean, it's, 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 you gotta meet all those requirements, you have to. It's not an option here where we can say, well, you know, intent of the neighborhood, but you don't have to do anything about the land and any hardships at all.
Right, it's not that technicality.
Exactly, right.
But how many times does that technicality actually adhere to?
Uh, depends what town you live in.
But in this, in this situation, the inspector of buildings has written a determiny, determined that this was the course of action that we go through and that he has the authority to determine that, so I'm not, I mean, we can talk about this, we can go back, we can talk about the process.
But the applicant did what they were told to do.
With this process right here, this is.
Okay, so I just have two questions, obviously neighbors were notified. Did we have any feedback from any neighbors, any objections?
I have not.
At least that we've received and of course we'll ask because this is a public hearing.
Since this meeting began, we have not received any notifications, calls, emails from neighbors regarding this application.
Okay. Or previously. Okay, and this, this home will remain a single-family home?
Yes.
Um, I, I don't, I don't have any objections to it, but I will lead a bit to the board for comments, questions, concerns. Anyone?
No, I'd just like to see if there are any neighbors present, that's all.
Yep, so this is a public.
Did we hear anything from any neighbors?
No, we just asked.
Thank you.
No, we're good, uh, well, unless there's somebody online. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that has any questions, comments, concerns about this matter?
We don't see anybody with a raised hand online and nobody has asked a question in our Q and A box.
Great, may I have a motion?
Motion closed public hearing.
Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have another motion, please?
Well, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of a special permit pursuant to section 6.1.3, non-conforming single and two-family residential structures of the zoning bylaws to permit a slight increase to the building within, to building with, sorry, this is phrase, a slight increase, increase to the building within an existing non-conforming setback on property owned by Mohan Babu Rames, Ramasetti and lo, I hope I didn't ruin your name, and located in the one-family residential district located at 16 Hilltop Drive, subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit B attached.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Moving on, item C is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.3.2.23.2 solar energy system ground-mounted of the zoning bylaws, 3 September Lane, Sunrun Installation Services is the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening, Steve Kelly from Sunrun.
Good evening, Steve. Can you tell us a little bit about the project that you're proposing?
The ground mount is in the rear of the lot, it's a rather long lot. And it's, I believe it's four by six, no, not even that wide.
Four rows by seven panels?
Four rows by seven panels and six piers. We went in front of the conservation board last week and sort of sits back in front of some growth, vegetation. So you can see it from the September Lane, but difficult to see from Mill Road or from Spring Hill Road, I think it is.
Spring Valley.
Spring Valley. Not too tall.
How tall is it?
I don't know. I could get that information too.
Is that, 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 that area is in a, is it a flood plain?
It is in a flood plain, there's a small creek, it's within one hundred feet. And again, we went in front of the conservation board last week, there are six piers, helical piers that are about two and a half inch diameter. So there'll be no fill, the, the largest disturbance will be from the trench. Discuss that and the trench can stay open for a day if it has to and we'll get that filled back up.
I'm sharing, sorry. Is there any proposed fencing or landscaping around this?
At this time, no, there is a fence that runs along the property line between the neighboring home, but there's no additional fencing planned for it.
So in.
What kind of fence are you just curious?
I believe it's stockade, it's a wood fence.
So I can answer that question, Joe, of fencing, so in 10.9.1, ground-mounted, shall adhere to setbacks, prohibited from our, they can't exceed fifteen feet and they shall be sighted and adequately screened to minimize the view from abutting properties.
So can you do a Google as we swing around September Lane to, over to.
Spring Valley.
Spring Valley and Mill Street too, because this is, this is a butt.
It's, it's on a corner, so that's what's interesting.
No, this, there's a lot behind it, on Mill.
On Mill, yeah.
It's on the corner of Spring Valley and September.
September, as you swing.
It might be one in.
No, it's actually one, one home in, one, one lot in.
Home on the corner of that.
Yeah, so this is the corner of this, but it does directly abut. I think 193 Mill Street is the one that's right behind it. My old neighborhood.
I was just gonna say.
Yeah, so I think we'll definitely need, we'll definitely need the height of that just as we can see where that is compared to what we're gonna see from, from the other side. And do you have like an artist rendition of what that will look like from, you know, a couple of different areas there?
Yes, we do.
And is there example of like a four by seven that's somewhere in the area that we could take a look at?
Example of what, I'm sorry?
The same kind of four by seven some in other towns?
I don't think so, we don't do that many in suburban areas. Typically, they're up in New Hampshire or Western Mass.
Off, off like the Mass Pike and things like, yeah, right, yeah.
Well, those, I think you're referring more to solar farms than just the singular applications.
Well, I think we probably want to get a sense of what that might look like because we don't really have any idea, so that would help us, I think, quite a bit. Go ahead, yep, so if we go down there.
So this is the property in question.
Right.
This is the, the dwelling and there's a pool and I believe that the solar array will be right here.
What's the street to the left?
Um, this is Spring Valley Road.
Okay, so, so if you can Google us all the way down there and drive us down and take a right on Spring Valley, because what you do is you got a clear shot from that Spring Valley right into the corner of the backyard there, so I just want to see what that fence is and how high that my fence might be right there, yeah.
I think we're good.
Okay, let's swing around.
Yeah. Yeah, it is a stockade fence.
So right there, whoops, if you back up a little bit, I think that's where you get the, you're gonna have that shot to where you're gonna see, potentially, see, depends how high it is.
How high is it?
One going.
It's, is it, I have.
I'm trying to.
I have.
Right there is where it's gonna be.
What about this one?
That one it'll be in, solar foundations, thank you, that's what I was trying to find.
So you can see right here in this driveway, if you look straight across.
Is that where you're talking?
Yeah, that's where it's gonna be in the back of their yard, right there.
It's actually more towards that shed. It's, it's, um, quite a bit, yeah, it's, it's, so I think you'd have to get past the shed. The shed is on that property. And so I think it is here, that the height of this is a hundred and thirteen inches, which is.
Thirteen inches.
Nine and a half feet.
Nine and a half feet tall.
Correct. So I would say it's probably gonna poke up a little bit over that shed.
Neighbors are going by, correct, that is pretty tall.
Yeah, the maggot is, it can't exceed fifteen, according to our bylaw.
Exceed fifteen feet tall.
So, there's, there's nothing in there, remember discussing when this went in, going, to prevent kids from getting into the mechanicals, the electricals and all of the.
That's what I was asking about fencing, so that's, because there's definitely a lot of kids in that neighborhood.
There's a fencing requirement, no, there's a screening requirement.
Screening, it's definitely something that we would probably condition, absolutely.
But there is a fence around the entire property?
No.
No, oh.
There's a fence around the pool and there's a fence along the property line.
So this would be outside the fence that's around the pool?
Correct.
Okay.
Significantly, significantly to the rear.
Okay.
I'm gonna go back to where I was.
Can you, can you zoom that since you, before you get off that, can you just zoom in? Go zooming in, keep on zooming in, there you go.
Yeah.
So what you're gonna see, so where that stockade fence is where?
Is this the end of the stockade fence right here?
I thought it continued all the way, but apparently it doesn't.
I didn't think I saw a stockade fence, they were where it would be straight shot to the shed.
So this, I don't know what this is though. What is this? That looks like a fence.
Looks like a fence with. Is, is the, the homeowner here with you that can speak to this?
I can get him here.
I'm sorry?
I can get him here. I can get him here pretty quick.
Well, he doesn't need to be here, I, I could, well.
He can join the Zoom.
Keith O'Regan, if you could jump in, I mean, Keith, are you online?
Yeah, sorry, I'm here.
Okay.
If you could speak to, um, are you looking at the left-hand side, to the left of the pool, is that a fence right there?
Yeah, so the, the first image, the Google Street image you were looking at?
Keith, hold on one second, we can't hear you.
Oh.
Keith, Keith, so I don't.
So Keith, so, I'm sorry, so.
You can introduce yourself.
Yes, you are. Um, Keith, so that's at the home, at that.
So that, that, that picture.
Hold on one second, can you just, um, just state your name for the record, please?
Uh, my name's Keith O'Regan, I'm resident of three September Lane.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, so the, the first vision you, the, the first image you were looking at from the street view is outdated, there's now a fence, a really tall fence right there.
How's really tall? Oh, no tall's tall.
Uh, well, you can see the shadow, um, it's, it's not nine feet, but it's, it's tall.
Six feet, probably, well, you, you would need a permit, I think you need a permit over six, so it's probably six feet.
Okay. Is, is that your fence?
It's the neighbor's fence.
Thank you.
Um.
And I believe it's gonna be tucked back in, in this picture, all the way behind the shed.
Is there fence?
Not gonna be in that open area that you just, some of that brush has been cut back, and it's gonna be right in that area.
Are those, are there trees there that are coming down?
I think it's, no, there's nothing coming down, I think it's for sepia back there, it's not a tall growth.
Uh, is there a fence to the, to the property collectively around the perimeter of the lot? Doesn't look like it. What is that, that other small structure there on the other side of the brush, looks, is that a shed?
Yeah, it looks like another shed, I.
Yeah, that, that's another shed.
You can't see it from three September Lane.
Can you? Just a little bit, a little bit toward Mill.
Keep going towards Mill.
Yeah. Pull that up there, I just wanna see for the house, whose house that is.
One ninety-three Mill?
They don't have, so that shed, back there, it looks like.
This might belong.
No, it looks like, it looks like the left. Still on Spring Valley?
Yeah, on Spring Valley.
Or.
Yeah, I don't think that belongs to one ninety-three Mill, it looks like it belongs to the people on Spring Valley.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's brush, there are no actual trees.
I don't think so.
Maybe what you could do is you could give us a Google, and then put where this is gonna be on there, that's gonna be helpful, so you can see exactly where it's gonna be, it's gonna be behind the shed, it's gonna be, you know, next to the fence, help me out quite a bit here. And you have technical specs on that, right, is there like a, a, a trade name and a part number for the four by seven?
I don't know.
There is, I'm sorry. There is right there, okay, thank you, thank you. Let's see, this is, I want to read.
Okay.
Turn it a little.
That, my question is, maybe we require that this is screened, if that is brush, I would want to know how high it is, how low lying it is, is it going to, is, is the brush that's already there going to screen this from the people on Mill Street, or is that too low lying, or is it gonna be cut down? Well, I think that, you know, something I would like to see is definitely, you know, definitely fenced in to protect, you know, children for sure, um, and then, you know, if there is a six-foot fence on that side, you know, potentially some arborites or something that's potentially gonna block that from the neighbors if we're going above that nine and a half feet, if we're at nine and a half feet for a six-foot fence, alternatively, if they would prefer to put ten-foot fence, I mean, they're welcome to do that too, I just, I don't think that, that.
So.
I don't know, I, I, I would rather see arborites for it.
I, I guess my question is on the model trade name, so the actual solar panels themselves, and you've got a four by seven, is the name of that a Trinum, Trinasolar module?
That's the panel tree.
Yep, okay. Okay, thank you.
Well, and this, and the standard panels that would be used on a roof mount, they're not a special ground mount panel. The commercial panel is larger, but these are standard sized, so they don't move, they do not move.
So, and this is, yeah, my lack of knowledge about panels and heights and such, if it's a standard that would just go on a roof, why does it have to be nine and a half feet?
That's the four panels, to keep it off the ground, and that's, the panels are about three and a half feet wide, so that's almost fourteen feet on the slope right there, so.
Oh, okay, okay, I understand.
So why couldn't you put it on the roof?
Because remodeling plans make the roof not acceptable for panels.
I don't quite understand what you're saying, remodeling plans?
The, the planes on the roof won't accept panels, it's gonna be too cut up.
Today or later?
Later. And these have a twenty-year lifespan.
So they're going to be angled, but they're not gonna move?
They're not gonna move.
How high will be at the, how high will be the highest spot?
Nine and a half feet.
So, okay, so, so they're significant.
Which way are they angled?
In, how do you, which is the, the degree on it, or they?
This direction.
Now, if you, if you.
South facing?
They're south facing, so if you look at the, there's the panels on the house next door, so basically the same orientation.
Can you show me where that is, thanks?
So these are the, you can see on five, they're right there.
So they'll be angled toward.
They'll be angled toward the house, so.
So the highest part is, is.
Is in the back.
The back of the property, and it slopes down toward the pool.
So if they were put on the house, they'd have to be on the front of the roof.
Correct.
Right, okay.
You're actually better off having them probably in the back.
Yeah.
I'm just, this is just a curiosity question, why angled instead of flat?
Because it diasmith.
I'm just curious.
It's, it collects more.
It collects more sunlight.
It collects more.
Um, is there any concerns that there is glare could affect the neighbors, is that something that, is, is that a thing, I mean, could the glare bounce off windows or anything along those lines?
It's not allowed according to our bylaws.
Okay, well, I just, again, I'm asking the question so that we're getting the information out there, so.
Right, but once they're built, if there's glare, what's gonna happen?
Exactly.
Right, we would ask, I mean, through this process, is there glare, there can't be glare, what are you doing to minimize that glare, or what different product are you using, so it's a good question.
Well, if there can't be glare, there's nothing to minimize.
Right, but to make sure, obviously, that there isn't.
I'm trying to keep up.
Okay.
So I, I think because Bill has asked for some, you know, a rendering so we can see exactly where it is and what it will look like, so you're gonna be coming back, so what I would also like to see is what it would look like from the other properties, from, from Spring Valley and from one ninety-three Mill Street.
Go ahead.
Um, in addition to that, I think there should be, there should be some type of landscaping plan to minimize the view for the neighbors as well.
Right.
Fencing.
And fencing in the rear, of course, that, the lot should be fully enclosed, I think.
Or at least the array should be fully enclosed.
My, my concern is these got a twenty-year life, if you, the fencing should be vinyl, so it doesn't deteriorate and fall at twenty, and so it should be a vinyl fence, so that it withstands at least the, the life of these things.
Uh, yeah, I, I think the decision needs to say that there needs to be a fence at all times, whether it be vinyl, wood, or that, you know.
It has to be maintained.
The other thing is, is that, would we, can we condition some type of signage around the exterior of the fence, so, you know, ground mounts are kind of a different animal that we're looking at.
Yeah, I would ask the applicant to propose whatever stan.
Whatever would be standard for, you know, if it was a solar farm of some sort, you know, I'm not looking for anything ostentatious, just something that's more rewarding and, you know, to keep.
I would imagine they.
Curiousness out.
If you look in the last page of your.
Right, it's required probably on installation.
These are required on the, on it, on the, on the equipment itself, on the last page, but if you want additional signage on the fencing would be separate, but just so you know, this is already a requirement that they're proposing.
It should be on the fencing and then screen sometimes, or some soft.
Um, depending on how they're gonna do the fencing, if you're going to enclose this, this, the solar, um, the solar panels, just the solar panels, I would say put a sign at the entrance of that, otherwise, if they're on the panels, then I would just say maybe to someplace where it's visible, and I'll leave that to you to kind of get creative and see what the applicant, the homeowner would like to, uh, see what the homeowner would like to see.
I would like to leave that up to the inspectors, building and electrical inspector, it's really not my expertise, the electrical end of it, I handle the building end of it typically, um, so we have a myriad of signs that we use for battery projects and for different things, so I would like to leave it up to the inspectors to.
So we should, we should be getting something from the building department?
Yeah, let's connect with the building inspector and figure out what, what they think is sufficient, okay.
Ma'am Chair, can I just follow up with a question I had yesterday?
Of course.
Have you ever done one of these things at a residential property?
Yes.
Okay.
We only do residential, but as I said, most of them have been in New Hampshire, Western Mass, obviously larger lots.
Okay.
Do you have?
Yeah, good.
I was gonna say, do you have any pictures of those that you can share with us?
Sure.
That would be great.
Maybe, maybe an address in New Hampshire, if it's close, only half an hour up the road, probably not Western Mass, I don't have that often, but I'm in New Hampshire fairly often.
Did one in a farm once, so I had to put wiring underneath it so the animals wouldn't eat the wires, little interesting, having sheep come up to you.
And about the same, about the same size of four by seven is what we'd be looking for there.
Yes.
Um, okay, is there anything else, um, that anyone has on the board?
Nope.
Um, going to open up, is anyone in the public that has any questions, comments, concerns regarding this matter?
I will tell you. I, I don't see anybody with their hand up in the participants list.
Okay.
I don't see anything in the Q and A, so.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Ma'am Chair, if I just make one more, I'm gonna make a smart remark, and I can't help myself here.
[laughing].
But the comment that the applicant made really sticks to me a little bit, and it's about the character of what these things are doing, uh, I, I, personal experience about someone that had built something near me, and somebody drives by, and they go, you know what, why would they have done that, that's something that belongs in New Hampshire, right? Um, you know, and not kind of a one-twenty-eight belt type of, uh, structure, and, uh, you know, it's, it's out of character with the neighborhood and the town, and something that's where, yeah, he's, he's done some of those, and mo- most of them are in New Hampshire, and you see them in Western Mass when you go out to the more rural areas, and that's okay, and that's because it's not kind of the controlled zoning that people wanna see here, so that's just to maybe, just keep that in the back of our minds when we look at renderings and things like that about, you know, which, which, New Hampshire's great, don't get me wrong.
No, but it's, you know, the fact is that, you know, the reason we don't like them to begin with is it's, it can be offensive, I mean, it's, you know, as good as solar is, and I'm a solar guy, I, I, solar and the wind is the way we need to be going, but, you know, some of these things have just become very offensive, and they're not, you know, uh, not, if they're put in the wrong places and not screened the right way.
Well, that's why people put them way in the back of their property where their neighbor can see it better than they can.
Right.
If I might add, if you do take a ride by, it's, it's a pretty extensive lot, and.
Unfamiliar, is it very long, deep a lot?
And it's tucked, it's tucked nicely in the back, and so I get the point, I live in Stonem, so it's.
Sure.
You know, I have it on my roof, not on my lot.
There you go.
Okay.
Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll see you here in a couple of weeks, if you can just work with staff on the, um, the items that we're requesting.
Yes, right, Greta will be.
We'll be in touch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on, um, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven D through, um, wait a minute. Is, I don't think these are.
Is it seven D?
Seven A, B, C, and D?
Um, it, oh, it did.
Is it D, E, F, and G?
I don't know why it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
It's supposed to be D through J.
To take items seven D through J together for discussion purposes, sorry.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point seven point one, light manufacturing or processing plants, prototype manufacturing, the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Ave Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item E is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point seven point one point one, research and development of the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Ave, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item F is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point seven point four, laboratories, laboratories engaged in research, experimental and testing activities included but not limited to the fields of chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, non-biologic medicines, and physics, of the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item G is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point seven point four point one, life science laboratories engaged in research, prototype manufacturing, experimental and testing activities included but not limited to the fields of pharmaceutical biomedical technologies and engineering, life systems, technologies, environmental and biomedical devices, biosafety level four BL dash four, laboratory, laboratories defined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, are prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item H is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point seven point four point two, life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life science, life systems, technologies, environmental, biomedical devices, biosafety level four BL four, laboratories, as defined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, are prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item H, I, item I is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point seven point nine, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge, of the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item J is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point seven point eleven, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Ave., AP Terry LLC is the applicant. I'm like lightheaded now. (laughing). Good evening, folks, if you could stay, stay your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Christine Hung, Reema Bronstein. With me tonight, I have Kevin McCall, the CEO of Paradigm Properties. Um, Paradigm recently purchased 22 Terry Ave., which is the former site of the Cosman Medical Supply Company. Um, the building is currently vacant and Paradigm is seeking all of the special permits to allow for R and D intelligence, robotics, and technological innovation type uses. Um, there's no tenant identified yet, um, but as the current market is dictating, all the tenants are looking for speed to market and having the permits in hand. Um, just to quickly orient you to the site, um, you will see up on the screen that the corner sits on, um, the site sits on a corner lot bounded by Terry Ave. and Long Street. It's in the IG zoning district, Aquaphor, and the Town Center overlay. Um, it contains a two-story building that's approximately 40,000 square feet and residential properties abut the north of the site and then industrial businesses, um, abut the east, south, and west, uh, part of the site. Um, the employee parking is located in the back of the building and to the side and the loading docks are located in the front of the building, which acts as a sound buffer and it's further away from the, the residential, um, houses. Um, the applicant is not proposing any exterior modifications. However, we acknowledge the sensitive, um, location of the site, that it's in the Town Center overlay and that it's, um, abutting residential neighborhoods. So the applicant is proposing some exterior enhancements and I'll turn it over to Kevin McCall right now and he can talk to you or, um, talk more in depth about the exterior enhancements as well as the potential tenants that could come to the site.
Sure, thank you, Christine. Um, as Christine said, I'm the CEO of Paradigm Properties. We're headquartered in Boston. We are a 25-year-old company that invests principally in office and industrial property. We're a, we're an investor, we're a developer and, uh, manager of, of a lot of this kind of property. Um, with respect to target tenants for this property, it's principally going to be in what the market currently calls intelligent R and D. That includes things like robotics and artificial intelligment, intelligence, autonomous systems design, those types of firms, uh, which are, are sprinkled very much around this, uh, this community and, uh, and the northern part of the, of the greater Boston area. Um, secondarily, but lower probability would be a life science, uh, company or lab use. Um, we think it's much higher probability that we will get somebody in that intelligent R and D space. It's possible that there will be a, uh, a prospect that comes along that wants to use it for lab purposes. Um, some of the, uh, enhancements to the building that we intend to get underway quickly include, uh, removal of the chain link gates at the front, uh, of the property on either side of the building. Uh, we're gonna get rid of those. We're adding some landscaping, um, uh, in the front of the building. Uh, we're also, uh, putting in an arborvitae buffer, uh, so that if you're coming down Terry Ave., you don't, you aren't smack dab seeing the, uh, the loading docks. Uh, you'll be shielded from the loading docks a bit. Uh, and we're adding trees, uh, along the side of the property and to the rear. There's a pretty good tree buffer between, uh, the property and the residences, uh, to the north of the property, but we're gonna add some, uh, some, uh, green giant trees there, uh, that are, uh, evergreen. And, um, other, other, uh, improvements that we're considering, um, would be, would include the addition of a, a walkway from the front entrance down to the street and if the, if the town feels that it's appropriate, uh, a, a crosswalk to the other side of the street so that pedestrians can access the, the sidewalk that's on the, uh, on the other side of, uh, of Terry Ave. Uh, we intend to replace the roof. Uh, we're gonna replace some mechanical equipment. We're gonna crack fill and, and seal coat the, uh, the existing paved areas and we'll, we'll replace some of the, uh, mechanical equipment that's, uh, that's beyond its useful life. That's our plan for the property.
Great, thank you. Um, so we did, we did just receive this site plan, um, you know, today. So we're, I don't think that we're really prepared to talk about the site, um, you know, much, if at all. I think, um, a couple of things that I do have, uh, questions for staff. If they had an intelligent R and D versus a life science tenant, would the need for seven special permits be different?
Um, most likely, I mean, I, they're looking for the seven special permits to have, I think, the maximum flexibility, I think.
I understand.
But there would be, uh, not knowing exactly what the use is that they're talking about, um, I can't say for sure that there, but there would most likely be special permits. As we're just hearing the, it, the presentation, I can't answer.
Sure, okay.
Hundred percent.
I definitely, you know what, I think that we should continue this matter, but, um, I just want to hear if any of the, the staff, if you have any comments that you'd like to make or if the board would like to make any comments at this time.
Um, so there's seven special permits, um, for a variety of uses. Um, as you guys, as we, we're looking at a lot of buildings, um, especially when we're looking at repositioning of buildings, the one question you look at is kind of, where is the building now? Where is the site now? I mean, this building was built a long time ago and this building's in the Town Center. What are the things that we're looking at? I mean, understanding that we're not ground-up construction, but how are we evolving this site and changing these uses and meeting the, the more modern demands? I mean, you're in the Town Center, there, there's really not very much walkability from this site. Um, Terry Ave.'s an older corridor, as you guys know and have heard, um, when other buildings come up. Um, so I, I, there, I think, you know, and we've communicated that, you know, we definitely need to see some more curb appeal here. The, there's a lot of loading dock activity. I know you guys have been talking about since, you know, since we've been doing the Town Center in 2005, just kind of transitioning this corridor. And I don't necessarily have a concern of, you know, a life science use necessarily, but I think when we're looking at this, the age of the building, what's the stormwater picture? How does this respond to the neighborhood? Um, it's nice to have a use that will bring employees and have patrons that will come and use the Town Center and go to True North and get coffee. Um, but, I mean, a- as we look at these other uses and, I don't know, I just, I, I think that there's a conversation we need to be having as, with seven special permits in front of us. What is the site changes? And we just need to have that conversation as to how do we bring this to the next level, understanding where we are and what we're constrained by, but also that there's seven special permits in front of us and how are we looking at this in the Town Center for this, for this use and the site and how are we using it?
So do we have, um, cause we were sent the...
We just, yeah, we just got this this afternoon.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have hot copies of those, do you remember?
No, we don't, no.
Nothing. Oh, of the, of...
Cause I'm, I'm looking at, is the, is it almost three acres? Is that the size of site or two-point something or?
I mean, honestly, when I'm looking at this, like, when I see this address, I would also think of life science, like the re-zoning and changing things and special permits and such. I, I would have thought more residential, you know, kind of that walkability that we continue to talk about at this space. So I, you know, I think it's, this is gonna be a long conversation.
I mean...
Is it, is it, is this etched in stone what you're looking for? Or are you investment, for investment purposes, looking for, uh, you know, an inv- you know, just a development on that site somehow?
No, we're, as, as Kristen said, we're not changing the, the footprint of the building or the exterior of the building. We're just enhancing, enhancing the site.
Yeah.
We've, we've done demolition in the, in the building from the prior use, uh, but there will be a build-out based on the, the tenant that we, uh, that we attract.
So that's, yeah.
Oh, go ahead. And it's currently zoned industrial, it's in the IG zone, I mean, multifamily or residential isn't permitted in the IG zone. So, it, you know, this, these are the uses that are allowed either by special permit or by right. I would argue that it would be less of an impact than having an office space in there with respect to employees and traffic. The potential tenants that could come are highly educated, um, sophisticated clients that would be in the office. They would be using the amenities in the Town Center. So it's kind of a business that you want in the Town Center. Um, um, I guess I forgot to add also that we have been before the Board of Health. We were at a meeting, um, last week. They've issued their conditions. One of the conditions was that prior to construction of the tenant, because a tenant is not known at this time, that we would go back before the Board of Health to introduce the tenant to, to, to the Board of Health to, you know, describe the operations and things like that, so.
I'm just gonna, one last comment and just...
Sure.
Not to waste your time, and I've explained this when we've had life science uses, without an actual user in front of us and special permits being requested this close to residential? Doesn't matter what you say, mine's a no. So I'm just gonna tell you from the beginning and I've explained that rationale in a past application and this one is actually closer to residential than that. Unless I have the user in front of me, it, I, I, I can't bring myself to be issuing a special per... My personal feeling for a life science when, when the residents don't have the ability to face the user and ask questions, you know, the way the special permit was meant to be done. So that's just me, I, I, I'm not trying to be...
I, I agree with you.
I'm just saying that's my, I, more almost to not waste the time with me, cause that's where I'm coming from, so.
I actually agree with you in terms of having the applicant known because it is so close to residential. I have a question that, a, a, more of a curiosity. You said, um, during your, your introduction that you expect this to be probably robotics or AI or intelligent R and D and you think it's less likely to be life science or lab use. Could you explain to me why you think that? Because we're seeing a lot of lab companies that want to come into Burlington.
You are. Uh, you, you definitely are. I think it's the nature of the building. Uh, much of this building is, is, uh, 28 feet clear. Uh, there's a mezzanine, the second story is a partial mezzanine.
So it doesn't have a height?
Uh, so it's, it just doesn't lend itself, um, as well to a life science, you know, typical lab use. Like you're seeing at some of the office buildings in, in this town that are being converted to lab.
So if it's not gonna be lab, some of these special permits might not be necessary, which brings us back to what Joe was saying, that if we knew who the user was, then we would know which special permits were necessary and could perhaps provide some greater level of comfort to the residential neighbors. Um, the other thing, I think what Joe was alluding to was that, um, we have for a long time looked at this area as a possible transition area from the business community to the residential community and we've thought a lot about whether or not it would be appropriate in the future to allow housing in this area. And I think what Joe was alluding to is, uh, we would wonder if that was something that would be of interest if it was allowed or if you don't do residential.
Well, my company does not do residential.
I understand, I just, just curious.
With, with respect to, um, the, coming back before the board, um, we, we thought that would be appropriate to, to come before you and seek your approval for these special permits based on a hypothetical use because as Kristen points out, speed to market is very important. Uh, and being able to convince a prospect that there is no risk in their signing up, uh, at least with us, is, is important. And, uh, I know you meet regularly, but we just thought it might be appropriate to come before you early.
I'm honestly not trying to, I'm not in any way trying to be disrespectful. I, I just feel my rationale is, is simply, I feel like the special permit process is the vetting process for the abutters, you know, who in this case...
Sure.
Happen to be neighbors, have the ability to face the user and ask the questions that will make them comfortable or uncomfortable.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think that that, to, to do that before we have a user that they can face and ask those questions to, I feel like is circumventing that whole important process and that's where I...
Sure.
And I, I've explained this, you're not the only one, I, we had one not too long ago before us and that was my same rationale, so.
I, I agree, but you know, you have a great Board of Health and we'd be back before the Board of Health who will vet, I mean, we've already agreed that we go back before the Board of Health. We were able to vet all of the, the chemicals, the operation, if it's even appropriate, that they would be, you know, that they would do a full dive into the operations, the floor plan and that is why in this particular condition that they have not done, they said in other conditions, is that prior to renovation and, and before even the certificate of occupancy, that we would go back before them so that they would understand who the tenant was, where they're putting chemicals, storing chemicals, if that's even appropriate with, you know, with a, a potential tenant. So your Board of Health is, you know, exceptional, they've permitted...
Absolutely, we fully agree with you.
I don't think that that's, that's what you're hearing. Uh, we have full confidence in the Board of Health. It's just, it's, this is a different animal. This isn't, um, you know, in, uh, heavily industrial zone, this is a residential zone.
Yeah, but I think that they keep their, their residential abutters, you know, very much in mind when they...
Oh, of course they do.
Yeah, so.
Do we?
Member Reema?
Yes, I just would like to make a comment about this. If you walk down Terry Ave., that end of Terry Ave., much of it is fill. You, if you just, it's kind of a split, there's a building to the, uh, parking lot to the left and then it's more to the right and straight ahead. And if you go down there, there's like a five-foot drop-off at the end of that and there's a huge pipe, I would say it's five-foot drainage pipe that goes into there. And if you look down in there, if it's been any rain or anything, that's wetlands. Uh, and you can't, you can't even get down there, walk down there. And it also comes from Fairfax Street right down and into that area. That goes directly over and under the, under Bedford Street and it ends up very shortly in our well field. So, so that's a sensitive area, and we have to be aware of what's there cause a spill there, you know, goes where, uh, where, uh, we, we don't want to. And so whenever that property comes up, I say that's right, because some of our water still comes from our well field.
Sure.
And, uh, so I, I hope that we keep that, not in the back of our mind, but the front of our mind, when some of these people, uh, you know, are applying to come in, no matter how nice they are or whatever, if in fact there's a potential hazard from anything they're using or doing, I would not encourage them to go forward, uh, because those questions will be asked by us, uh, when they get here.
Sure. Member Carina?
Yes, it sounds like, uh, the applicant is saying it's very unlikely that there's getting, this could go, this is, excuse me, get that tongue back quick, belongs, uh, that this is, it's very unlikely this is gonna be, uh, life science-type lab space and more...
I think it's less likely, yes.
Okay, so, so, and it seems like it might be more palatable to this board to pull those special permits that would be necessary for that and then in the future, if you find it, that you're not, uh, able to market it to AI and robotics and the rest of, uh, I forget what you call it, uh, intelligent...
Or Christian intelligent, if, if the category is intelligent R and D is what the market calls it.
Intelligent R and D and, uh, which uses very little hazardous material, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
Um, I don't know how the rest of my mem- feel, board members would feel with that, but...
I would be more...
It doesn't look like you're gonna get all the special permits you're looking for. You have six people here, you already had two people say that they're not interested. So you might want to reconsider what you're asking for.
Well, let me, let me speak a little bit to, um, this, this may sound self-serving, but how our company manages property. During the due diligence period before we bought the property, we noticed that the transformer on this property had deterioration in it, which can lead to a, a, a hazardous condition. Uh, so, uh, immediately upon buying the property, uh, we contacted Eversource and the transformer was, was changed out this week. Um, we, we pay attention to our properties and, uh, and the, the, and when we have users that use chemicals, uh, we make sure they adhere to the requirements of the code and, uh, and the town in which they're operating.
If, I, I definitely hear what you're saying, but...
Understood. If, if there's an opportunity to, we, we, we've got a list of special permits that we are, are appearing before you for, um, if there's some way to, to split that list or to come back to you and talk to you in a different way about, uh, about the different uses, um, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss and then, obviously they want more flexibility, which is the reason for the permits, but we'll go back and discuss and then talk to planning staff about that.
So I think, I think that this is a good place to stop then. Why don't you, you know, you consult together and then consult with staff and then, um, when you're ready, you can come back in front of us and we can have a further discussion. Does everyone feel that that's...
Yeah, do we need to, some people showed up, but I don't know if you want...
Um, this is a public hearing, if there is somebody that would like to speak based on what we've... Come on up.
Hi.
Do you guys mind switching?
Yes, you know, according to what I'm who would say...
If you could just wait one second, we're just gonna switch folks out so you can be in front of the mic.
Otherwise the people at home can't hear you.
You sent the stage.
Christine, you can stay there.
I'd rather not be here. Honestly. Okay, that's fine.
Um, first of all, thank you all, because I just let out a big sigh of breath back there listening. I, I really and truly feel like this board gets it. You understand, you've all made comments about how close you are to the residential property. You understand our concerns, I can feel the empathy and so I appreciate that, so thank you very much. I have to say though, um, you only have to look as far as the brick building behind them. You had the owner of that building, her father had passed away and she came to a meeting that was, I don't know, if it was a year ago or so. They too had tenants in there that they said they had good control over. And if you remember, you took a site tour there.
Hmm.
Filth, trash, food, illegal condenses, rats, um, you know, I can go on. How long did that go on? And it wasn't cleaned up, it took quite some time and it still isn't. I sent you the pictures, it's better, but it's not, I'm talking about just the cleanup. I'm not talking about what they said they're going to do in terms of renovating and, and bringing the land up to code and making it all better. I'm a little insulted that developers or investors could come and ask us to trust them with something as serious as toxic and hazardous materials. How dare they? Let them put it in their yard a hundred feet from their back door and see if they're gonna trust those people. Please don't give any control. Keep the control so that you can protect the residents and protect that neighborhood. We don't want to be a WR Grace, we don't want to be Warden. And let me tell you, if something happens in that neighborhood, it's not just the people on Arthur Woods Ave. and Dale Street and people driving by who are gonna be affected. It's gonna affect more than just that neighborhood. It's going to affect more than just that neighborhood. So again, I want to thank you very much because your sincerity and the empathy, I think we, who are here tonight could all feel it, and we trust this board. So I'm just asking you to continue with your positions and to please stay strong for our neighborhood, for the entire community and the town of Burlington. This is serious. This isn't, you know, I want to put a, you know, bigger sign up or any of those issues. This is very, very serious and I personally don't think that anybody should be given a special permit. Barbara and Joe made the comments. We don't even know who they are. And I love the comment that somebody made, and I'm not sure who it was about, you know, maybe it was Ernie. He mentioned about, let's get, they don't think it's going to be lab sciences, life sciences, so let's get the other people in. And then maybe it's a discussion for further down the road. My final thought, I know that neighborhood and many people in Burlington would love it if we could change the zoning down there. I know that Joe actually brought it up. I don't know who else was on the board at the time, but Joe was definitely in favor of changing the zoning and I don't think it's too late. So is that something that we could look in into? That's it. I won't go on, but I want to thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Keep going to our meetings, please.
Is there anyone else in the audience or online that would like to speak on this matter?
Janet Osland, three Dale Street.
If you would just please speak in front of the microphone.
I just, I have a question.
Can you repeat your name?
Janet Osland, three Dale Street.
Thank you.
I have a question for Kevin. Who is AP Terry? I tried to look them up. It looks like they were formed in January of 2022.
It's the oldest company that owns the building. It's ourselves and a capital partner.
Okay.
Institution, a partnership partner.
So I completely agree with not giving any permits when you don't know who the client is. One of my questions that I was going to ask tonight was who is the client? What exactly is their business? You know, what do they do? And what types of hazardous waste is going to be there? So without knowing the answers to those questions, I just don't see how something like that could ever be approved, but that's what I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else online or in the audience that would like to speak on this matter?
I'll check online.
No.
I don't see anybody raising their hand. Let me check the Q and A. I have Ron Campania. My house is directly behind that building. I am not having a hazmat or toxic materials behind my house at 30 Arthur Woods Avenue.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Where this is near, so near residential areas, because there's one in back right behind the woods and the one coming down the hill and so forth. It would be nice to have a list of when somebody comes in for, if they want a rezoning, of all of the uses that are allowed in that zone so people will know, you know, what potentially can come in if there's any zoning there. Because you could put a use in there that's very benign, you know, a few people coming in and an office and so forth, or you could put a use in there that was semi-manufacturing and, you know...
Steph, if you could accommodate that for Member Raymond, that would be great.
Yep.
Okay, so, you know, you've heard comments from the board, you've heard comments from the neighbors. You know, I think it's, you should have a discussion amongst yourselves and with staff and then, if you so choose, feel free to come back to us. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of May 19th, 2022.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening, folks.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
We failed to go through announcements.
Oh, no.
So if we haven't announced any announcements, would you like to share those with us?
I would love to. So the announcements, which should have been read earlier. Town meeting, get ready. It's May 9th, next Monday at 7:30 in the high school auditorium.
Hybrid.
From what I, I, you will have to speak with Amy Warfield to confirm this. From what I understand, only town meeting members will have the option to go hybrid.
Really?
But please confirm that with Amy before...
We get mad.
Yeah, we get, we get angry people. We also, the ZBRC Science Subcommittee is having a meeting on May 16th at 5:30 PM via Zoom, and I don't know if anybody else has other announcements.
I have a question. Are we expect, are you, is staff expecting our new position to come up on Monday night at the beginning?
So the operating budget is Article 7. As you guys recall, it usually they read every single one.
Right.
People say hold.
Right. So that'll be Monday night.
And they go through each one, not knowing, I mean, yes, I would assume, I would assume it's Monday night.
Thank you. And the reason I ask that is because then I'm just going to say, everybody, let's try and go.
Yes, if we could all attend, that would be great. I can, if those of you, I have some of your cell phone numbers, most of your, but not, not everyone's.
Monday night for the news.
I can let you, I can notify you when it's up a little closer.
Close.
But I do need, I have four of your cell phone numbers. Okay. Anything else that anyone...
I'm probably just going to be there.
That would be good. But I'm just saying, I do think it is important if it does come up for those of you, for you guys to be there.
Okay. Liz, there's two folks. Sally?
Hand up.
Sally has your hand up.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. I just want to correct the record. The next meeting of the Science Subcommittee will be on Monday, the 23rd, because we anticipate that a meeting will run for at least three nights. And so I canceled the meeting on...
Okay.
Thank you.
There's another woman up. If you could please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Lisa McGonagall. How are you?
Well, how are you?
I am doing great. I had put in an application for the open planning board seat. I'm very sorry. I know there was an interview at 5 o'clock. I had a meeting that ran late, so I just wanted to pop in and say hi and meet everybody and answer any questions that you had, if this was an appropriate time.
I don't think it is at this forum, but we will be in touch.
Okay, great. Thank you very much and thank you for the work that you do. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye.
Okay, so...
Finishing up, do we have any other announcements? Subcommittee report? What do you got?
The Burlington Sculpture Park is having a grand event on Saturday, May 14th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, where we will be dedicating the Ukrainian statue that so many people pitched in to help us buy. We want to thank everyone who helped us and we're inviting all of them to come. But we have also decided to expand the event a little bit, so it is a dedication of the sculpture, but it's also a celebration of Ukrainian culture. We are going to be having some Ukrainian Americans, some who reside in Burlington and some who reside in the area, who will be participating, reading some poetry, singing the Ukrainian National Anthem, and also someone who is a historian who will be coming and giving a talk about Ukrainian history. There will also be children's events, a reading, Storytime, and a grab and go craft from the library. So loads of fun. Everybody should come.
And when is that?
May 14th.
At what time?
10:00 AM at the Sculpture Park and we have a rain date of May 15th.
Great. Thank you. So anyone else have anything else that they'd like to report?
I just wanted to ask, are you going to collect money at that to be sent to Ukraine?
We are not. We collected money to be sent to the artist and we wanted this event to be really a thank you for everyone who already contributed, so we didn't really think we should hit them up for more.
All right. All right, well then, may I have a motion, please?
You can give it tonight if you want. Joel, take it. I'll take it. Make the check out. I'll give you the spelling for the name.
I M P.
I was going to say it's Rappaport.
Oh, yes, yeah.
A thousand to a thousand.
Hey, that's a thousand here.
Real money. What are you doing? I'm feeling good because...
All right, folks, may I have a motion, please?
Second. Motion for...
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Have a good evening, folks. Thank you. Well done, Madam.